I believe so, and I'm looking online.
I'm sure people will text us if it's not online.
I see it.
Okay, okay. So we're gonna call the August 26, 2020 Town of Alexandria Board Meeting to Order. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes. Has anybody, I've looked at the minutes, is anybody else? I just had the ones from the last, last meeting. You say you haven't, Mike?
I have not.
Either one of you?
I did look through them. I didn't see everything.
You okay? I mean, I'll... Motion by Sandy? I'll second it.
Four for the month of July.
I'll, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? None. Motion to pay the bills. I need a motion, somebody to pay the bills.
I haven't looked them all over. I've gotten about a third of the way through, so I'll make the motion, but I'll continue while I'm looking.
Anybody else have a chance to go through them?
I don't know.
I think we better hold off on that. And we can do that tomorrow, Nicole. Pending approvals tomorrow. Okay. Can we do that, Bob, pending approval tomorrow? We have, we haven't gone through them all.
Only if you adjourn the meeting. Only if you adjourn the meeting without approval of the meeting.
It's everybody's thoughts here.
I haven't seen them.
What's that?
I haven't looked through them.
Can't we just do it?
I've, I've, I've looked at them all when she created them, so I'm fine with it. If there's a second, we can do that.
I'll make the second.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, you're making the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? None. Okay, so the first thing we're gonna have is the privilege of the floor for anybody from the public that would like to speak. The floor is open. Jim?
Evening. Just have three questions. Brent, can you tell me at this time, who's, do we as a town, do we still own the stables?
No, no, we don't. Do we own it, you said?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so Mike, I guess the question is, is that, is it, was it decided on not to own it because of environmental?
It was decided that we had environmental testing done, which was part of the program, a part of the purchase offer that we made pending the approvals and pending the testing. The testing came back with some environmental issues. We've contacted the seller and told them that the Town of Alexandria will not purchase that property unless some environmental issues are given a clean, clean bill of health.
Now, was that in the area where at one time when I was on the board, we moved the line to avoid that?
There's four or five, there's four or five different issues, but I don't believe anything is back in that area that we talked about.
Okay.
There's some, there's some fuel tanks, there's different things up there that need to be taken care of that I know he's had an engineering firm look at, and he thinks he's, he plans on taking care of.
Okay, so based on that, because one of the questions that I hear all the time is, you know, I don't think we do, or maybe we do, but I'm not sure we do, as far as the ownership of the stables, because obviously the sale sign's still there. So I guess I'm asking, was, was the decision not to own the rink based on environment, environmental concerns, is that discussed in a public session where people would have privy to board minutes so they could answer their own questions?
I don't, I don't think that's been discussed in quite a lot.
Well, the contract that was approved was contingent on a satisfactory environmental review, so that was publicly discussed.
Right, I remember that, yeah, yeah. So to not, to, to wash your hands of it, sort of say, that can be just done with that?
I don't know that they've washed their hand, but they haven't met the contingency yet.
Okay, so basically it's kind of out there still?
It's out there. I mean, I think the goal, I haven't heard anything differently, the goal is to buy it, but only, I understand that. I know quite a bit about what we did there.
Two other questions, Brent, and I know you've got at least six or seven on the agenda. The opening date of the rink, and I know you've had discussions with Mr. Clapper and as well as Mr. Bashaw of TI. So do you have a tentative opening date? I know that's on your agenda for one of the questions prior to coming tonight.
I, I've been telling some people, which are the figure skating people locally, the minor hockey. I've had numerous conversations with Mike Gray. I believe they have a new person up there that is gonna be running the Thousand Island Minor Hockey. Their next meeting is Thursday night, this Thursday night. They're hoping that Clayton's gonna have ice September, October. I've talked to Clayton Supervisor quite a bit because they got a construction project going on that they're not sure when they're gonna be able to open. I know Clayton Minor Hockey or Thousand Island Minor Hockey's hoping they can open September 15th. Supervisor thinks that will be a very hard deadline to meet, is what he told me. So I've talked to this figure skating club, I've talked to the Canton Steel, the two gentlemen up there, about running time. I've talked to Mr. Clapper twice to see where things are there. I've talked to Mr. Bashaw, is it, from Clayton? And I, until yesterday, I was told that the varsity boys and girls were not gonna do any ice time until after January 1. As of yesterday, we got a notice from our county legislator, Phil Reed, and from Scott Gray, that a date of September 21st has been set that you can practice with certain guidelines. Is that right?
It does appear now that we, we can use the rink as we had previously anticipated using it. But my, I don't know if things will change further, but as of this point in time, yes, we still, we can practice on the schedule we normally do.
So we've asked Scott Gray to give us a detailed explanation of what the requirements are from the state of New York to operate a hockey rink and to participate. And we, we don't have that answer yet. We do have the memo that was sent out yesterday. And I think, like I was starting to say, I've told most people the first week in November, which is what we've opened for the last couple of years. And we're trying to see what we have for bookings. The high school varsity boys and girls are six and a half hours a week to seven and a half hours a week of rental. Everything else, I think, is gonna be somewhat normal. Talking to the, the private people that rent our ice, the two adult leagues, they're talking about it being normal. The figure skating club is talking about it, normal ice rental, maybe a little bit more because they know we're looking for more. So that's kind of what we're hoping at this stage.
So, I mean, you're not going to not open the rink?
No.
Later because of a contingency on the high school?
I mean, like I said, I mean, I, I'm only speaking for myself.
The state, the state is kind of driving everything.
Yeah.
What the state says is...
Well, I understand, so basically with football, Cuomo came out with something again today, and he's taking it a little bit slower for football, and I understand hockey and wrestling are the same contingency. But we as, as a school, and Chris and I have had these discussions, we plan on, if we can play games at the beginning because we have to always play with the numbers. And if our numbers stay relatively low, like in Jefferson County, I don't perceive there being an issue, but the bottom line is, is that even if we can't play games, we still want to be able to have the kids practice as if they were gonna play, because eventually there will be a football season. It may not be at this point in time, it may be the three seasons that the state has talked about. And there will be a hockey season. So my point is that we as a school district want to keep normalcy for our kids. And, and the opening time when we would normally start practice, we would still like to do that. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, I reiterate that to the board.
I mean, I am...
Practicing is one thing, playing the game, maybe we will, but I think down the road we're going to. So the point is that I know you've had discussions with Mr. Clapper. We attend as a school district to do the same we've done in the past years.
I mean, I'm, I'm just speaking...
Unless something happens that we don't know right now.
I'm just speaking as myself, I'm only one vote, there's five votes, and it takes three to make something happen. And I would like to see us open at a regular time. I would like to, hopefully we can fill some of these voids with some of these people from other areas.
Now, what, what have you gotten back from the Canton Steel?
I'm sorry?
What have you gotten back from the Canton Steel?
I haven't got any definite answers. They're looking for ice, and I think they're talking to two or three different places, because I've had a lot of talks with Lance Peterson, and they're talking to him too. So whether this is gonna get into a pricing deal or whatever's gonna happen here, I don't know.
One more question, and I guess it goes right around the rink, which is on your agenda number six and seven. Who do you have running the rink this year, so people know to make contact? Who's running the rink?
We don't, we haven't decided that yet.
You haven't decided?
We, we have some applications. So we haven't decided that.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any public comments? Susan?
Yes, I'm Susan Stein, John's wife. He got an email today from an Amy Bendo, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Sarmento or whatever. She's been posting a lot of stuff on social media, which I've ignored, I've never commented. But in this email that she has sent to the board today, she's stating that I contacted her place of employment and asked her to be reprimanded for her opinions that she posted on Facebook. I don't even know the girl, and I just wanna make a statement. And then if we've got the time, I've got a few things that she's put on there that I would like to address.
I'd just like to ask Jesse, Jesse, this email was sent to you that we all have, and it was also addressed to all the board members?
It was not, it was, it was addressed...
Because the one that I, oh, you sent it to all the board members?
I sent it to all the board members, yes.
I just wanted to say that that's how the email got to all the board members.
Yes, yes, she had sent it to me, asking me to send it all to you.
Yeah.
And making sure that she had, that they had read it for tonight's board meeting.
Right, and that's how I got it.
Yeah.
So I sent it on to everyone.
And she, she stated to John, what right does your wife have to contact my place of employment and ask for me to receive some reprimand for my opinion? I've never made one comment about what she's said. I've never been to her place of employment to talk about her. So I just wanted to make a quick, simple statement of some things that is related to that. And then again, I know they're gonna discuss some of the things in her email, but there were some other outrageous claims that I just feel should be cleared up. So, just to be clear, I have never contacted Amy's employer or coworkers in any way until today. When I saw Amy's post on Where in the Heck is Redwood, New York, I just laughed it off because I knew everything she stated was incorrect and could be easily disproven. I did not think about it again until she posted on the town Facebook page. She stated that she tried to communicate with all the town board members after, about her concerns. All board members have said she has never contacted them. She also stated that town board members called her employer to get her fired. All board members, again, have stated that they did not try to get her fired. Then today she sends this email and claims that I tried to get her reprimanded. Again, not true. I did today talk to a few of her bosses, I was told that no one, including myself, had tried to get her fired or reprimanded. I assured her employees, that employers, that there was no worries about what she posted. As I have stated, they can all be easily disproved. I've only talked with them today so I could defend myself from these unwarranted accusations. So a few of the things that she has mentioned, not in this email, but in some posts to the, on the town Facebook page and on Where in the Heck is Redwood, that the town board has funded millions and millions of money in the CDs. We know that's not true, I don't know if you've gotten a...
We have, we have on our agenda certificate of deposits, number 15, and Nicole provided a worksheet for us that shows exactly what we've done. And obviously we haven't done millions, but go ahead. We'll, we'll read that and do that when we get to it, okay?
And then she claims that the Redwood store was paid off in the 1990s.
We have a sheet here in front of us that shows that, that wish. Yeah.
I know, I, I feel bad about bringing up all this stuff because it's so far off that, but I, people believe this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, there's so many nasty comments?
Yeah.
Against the board, that I've decided, since she's brought my name up, I'm gonna take care of a few of these things. Another thing she said was the water line was paid for with a grant.
Two point, $2.1 million loan that we have on our financials.
And there were some grants, but there was a...
Yeah, there was grant monies, but we, we owe $2.1 million as of right now.
Another one that she wanted to know, which you've already discussed, the Bonnie Castle status, was what did you do with the massive five, I don't know if it was five million loans that you're gonna take out for improvements? Obviously that hasn't been done. And I don't know if you were gonna discuss, proclaim that you're always in Florida?
Yeah.
And not tending to your job. And this is the best one. The town board has taken out life insurance policies on their employees and has them listed as the beneficiary. Okay, so you've discussed the, no, we haven't discussed the youth organization status. Obviously, I know that, most people know that, that you're not doing the youth programs right now because of COVID and Cuomo's orders. And then the last one, she stated that you on May 8th censored, put a censorship, a resolution to censor all town records that no one would have access. And I looked up the minutes today, and that, that stated that you were not going to allow people to come in and physically remove the records. They could come in, do their foils, look at the records, but they weren't allowed to take them out of the office.
Jesse, just to clarify that, that was a motion that we did in May, and that was about records leaving here. And because of discussions that we had had with you, we, in the past, the town had allowed records to leave here, did they not? Or it was copies or, no, it was actual records because there was boxes. But that were brought back, but we felt there was some records missing, is that correct?
Well, some auditors had asked for the records, and we got them back very mangled, very destroyed, and not in a very easy, adaptable way to make sure everything was there. So at that point is where we decided not to have them.
I mean, we didn't censor them, we, anybody is, there was a gentleman in here last week, and he was here for half a day, and he copied everything that he wanted to copy, he paid you for his copies, and he left with them, is that correct?
Correct.
So we are, you know, the foil regulations are what they are, and we have not, I mean, we've always honored the foil regulations. Jesse is the foil officer, and she's always honored the foil request. I mean, don't get me wrong, she has been flooded with foil requests in the last 12 months. So, but we definitely have not, if that word is censored or held back or whatever.
Censorship, yes.
We have not done that. We can't do that.
I just wanna thank you, I wouldn't have said a word if she hadn't pulled me into this, for whatever reason, I have no idea, but I've got her accusations here, and they are what I just, most of them, what I stated, and as far as I'm concerned, there's not one that is correct.
Okay. Any other public comments? Shelley?
Hi. This is obviously the first meeting I've been to, and I really didn't have a lot of time to look at your, your budget and stuff like that. But I have a few questions. And number one, as town supervisor, what's your job description?
What is my what?
Job description?
There is a...
I guess I'm just asking, are you anybody's boss? Are you anybody's boss here?
I'm, I'm not, I would say yes.
That's in your description, then? So you can hire and fire?
No, no. As far as that's concerned, it takes the whole board. It takes three people, so I can't hire and fire.
So you can only hire and, I mean, you can't hire and fire anybody that's elected, that's obvious.
No.
So the only people that you can hire or fire are non-contractual?
Has to be the whole board, I can't do any of that by myself.
What I'm asking you though, even the whole board?
Yeah.
You can't, I mean, what, I guess, what workers can you, that don't have a union contract?
I mean, we have, I'm not sure how many workers we have, Nicole, that are non-union, but...
I'm just, I'm just questioning.
Yeah, I mean, we have TPW workers, we have water sewer operators.
Okay, so TPW workers are not unionized?
Right, they're not unionized. So how many do we have that are non-union?
I guess it doesn't matter, I just didn't know.
And again, I, I can't do anything to any of those workers by myself.
The other issue is, I've never, ever, 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 and I've been here, I don't wanna tell you how long, but anyways, I've lived in Alex Bay for a very long time. I've never put a sign in my yard for anybody because, first of all, it's a small community, and you know how that is. So when I started looking at all these signs that said, you know, vote no, I kind of like, you know, what's going on here? And when I was told, I was really taken back because in the 40s, people had a real issue because when people lost their right to vote, things didn't turn out very well for any of them. My father happened to be a disabled vet that sat in a hospital for seven and a half years to make sure that we all had our freedom. And one thing he told me, and told my brother and my sister, is never give your, never, ever, ever give your right up to vote. And I guess my issue is, is that I really have an issue with five people making a decision. Or, I don't know if this is your decision, but if this, if this were to happen, okay, if this was, if this was to happen...
I mean, just so you know, the, the motion and the action to put this on the ballot, to allow the voters to make this decision, was a unanimous decision by all five board members.
Okay, fine, yeah, that's, that's it. But I guess it's also the fact that if we have somebody now that we don't like, then the townspeople have the opportunity to vote them out.
Every four years.
Yeah, but you guys become a boss, and you can, you can pick your brother. You can pick your friend where you all get along, just great. I've been on boards before, so I mean, I understand the thing. But I, I just think that it shouldn't be in your, any of your hands, and not because you're president, not because, you know, you're saying puto, but because you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have the right to choose who you want. It should be up to the voters, and if we don't like who's there, then we should get rid of them. Now, there's times when I've been upset, you know, when Jesse wasn't there, but you know what? She got reelected, so she's here. And it really bothered me when I read the Thousand Island Sun, and it really insulted my intelligence, and I hope it really insulted everybody, for you to actually put in that last paragraph to say, "Oh, we want them to apply." Now, you know damn well you're not gonna hire them, come on. Don't even, you don't even answer it, because I know what your answer's gonna be. But that's really, really insulting, that you really think that you needed to put that in there when you know it's a lie.
Actually, Shelley, I was the one that said it, and I...
Well, maybe you didn't, okay, I'm not saying you didn't.
I, I did say it, and I did mean it.
Right.
I understand, in the period of time that I've been here, and as a taxpayer and having businesses, how things have broken down. I, I, when I first came in and have asked questions about Jesse, I have been told by every board member here that when, 'cause I, 'cause I asked a lot of questions about the deputy clerk, and I've asked a ton of questions, and I was told, when Jesse first came on as, when Ellen was going through her exitist and leaving, Jesse did a great job. She knows the job. She has had some issues the last couple of years. I don't think there's any displaying that, but that doesn't mean that she's not very qualified and not very able to do the job. So I would encourage her to, so I, I don't know why you would take...
You might, you might, okay, Sandy? I shouldn't have said all, okay, I shouldn't have said all. But the other issue at hand is, just like with your, your town, your town superintendent or whatever. I mean, you guys control the budget, so he can only do what, he can only do what he has to do with the money he's given, and I know that, I've looked at some stuff where you guys have definitely taken some money out of his budget and taken away his, I think he was gonna get like 11, I don't know, 11% raise or, I'm not sure what he was gonna get, but I think that's gone too, correct?
2%. He was gonna get 2%.
Oh, 2%, I thought 11% was pretty high, so, so even his 2% raise was taken out of budget.
Along 11.5% of the highway department budget.
Well, whatever, I just know this now. But the other, the other question I have is, you can't monitor her hours, right?
Absolutely not.
And we can't monitor your hours either, can we?
Any elected official, you can't.
Well, now, so how many hours a week do you work?
Varies.
So I'm saying, you don't have set hours?
No.
Okay, 'cause I know there's times where, I know you haven't been here for three days a week, and maybe you come in at 7 o'clock in the morning and work before you go to golf or tournaments.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, we need to look at the whole picture here.
We do, yep. We definitely do.
And I guess, other than that, I just think that it is hard once you become the boss, because who's gonna become, you can't have all five of you being a boss for these new positions if you get your wage. So who's gonna be the boss?
One of the things, Shelley, when I was elected, and when we went through the budget process, it was specifically stated that I was a part-time supervisor.
I know, at that time, so you get $40,000 for being part-time?
No.
Or $40,000?
Well, I'm, I'm here a lot more than part-time.
Right, so, so your wage is set on part-time right now?
It was never, it was never changed.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, obviously, I think the board...
You started out like a $20,000 grand or something, right?
The board feels we're, we're under the understanding that it's full-time, can answer that.
You are full-time?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you have an assistant budget officer that makes about how much? Are you an assistant, right, or something?
I'm the budget officer.
Oh, that's why you got that raise of $18,000?
I'm, I'm the budget officer, and the combined wages of the supervisor and the budget officer are $42,317.
Okay, and how much did your, your assistant get? Your, your budget?
Deputy supervisor makes $2,500, and that's Ron Thompson, and he turns that money back to the town.
No, I'm talking about Nicole.
Huh?
Nicole.
She's a bookkeeper.
And what does she get as a bookkeeper?
She gets paid $18 an hour.
What's her yearly salary normally? 38, 38? My question is, did we used to have a deputy, have we ever had a deputy supervisor before?
Always.
And they got paid that much?
No, you're, you keep asking deputy supervisor.
Well, I mean, I'm a bookkeeper, I'm sorry.
The terminology is bookkeeper. We've had bookkeepers before, yes.
We, we actually, before worked for Sherri Ferguson, and in a roundabout way, we...
We paid Ferguson.
We pay for her now, we just pay now.
Okay, so you're no longer parent, you're no longer having Sherri at all?
No, no.
So now you just pay Nicole?
Yeah.
And what was your budget for Sherri? Eight grand?
$1,000 a month.
What was that?
$1,600 a month.
Okay. You know, I just, my biggest thing is this, this no vote. I just think that no one should ever give up the right to vote, and that's my opinion, and don't get...
Do you, do you know that there's 92 townships in New York State?
I understand that, I'm 960 towns.
That have given up the right to vote.
You're right.
But there's also, for the 2010 consensus, there's 936 townships in 62 counties.
Right.
So if you do the math, which you can, you're gonna find out that that percentage is so low that it's not even worth looking at.
But I don't care about anybody else, I only care about my town.
Yeah.
And I only care about my right to choose Jesse, or Mike, or you.
Yeah.
The same way, that's always been. Because I, I'm... Because I, I'm, I know all about the good old boys because we had a school board at one time. And I just feel that, you know, some of this has gone on before with good old boy type attitudes. And you guys all crushed Nancy Sutton for that good old boy thing. But I just, I just don't think that you should be, you should be a boss, hire and fire, and hire anybody you want because it's not even going to be civil service, right?
Explain to you, I don't hire and fire.
Well, I'm saying if these positions become, all five of you then, okay?
Thank you.
Whatever. Right. If all five of you decide to hire or fire. But you don't, you don't, you're not even going to have a civil service, right? If you're just going to...
No, it's civil service.
There is going to be civil service.
It'll be still civil service.
Oh, it will be, okay, because that wasn't, that wasn't explained. Okay, so then these people will have to take a test?
No.
And be in the top three?
No.
Okay, what then?
Civil service rules don't necessarily mean tests involved. In fact, we have MEOs.
Yeah.
And in the highway department, none of them took a test to get that job.
Right, they don't have to do that, right.
So, but they're still civil service.
So they will then, they'll be represented by a union?
I don't know that.
I mean, Bob, they're represented by civil service after they work for so many years, correct?
Uh-huh.
No, what you're referring to is after five years of employment in certain categories, you're entitled to a hearing before you can be...
You can fire them.
That's different. They're different classifications of service. They won't, they won't be tested positions.
Right, okay, all right. All right, that's, so I've been reading off more of that, but thank you.
Okay, that it?
Yeah.
Any other public comments? Okay, so then we'll, we'll move to correspondence. And the correspondence we have is the letter that we've been talking about earlier that was sent to the town clerk and asked to be read at the meeting tonight under correspondence. "I feel obligated to write to the town board to discuss my concerns to the recent statement made by me on social media that I posted in relation to the town board's proceedings and town officials. To the town supervisor, questions, have you been, have you been raised about your absence not only by me but by other town members? I've spoken to them. I personally have tried to reach out to ask you questions and when I called the office or the store to speak to you, the answer was several times, she's out of town. I have no messages, I have no record. Jessie, you have any record of her calling and leaving messages for me? I have no record of that. It's a little disconcerting that you have issue with people who discuss this in public amongst themselves. The fact that you are traveling is not the issue. The issue is a lack of connection and openness as the elected town supervisor. In the last year, I traveled twice. I was gone for two weeks each time, one at Christmas time, where there was two weekends and two holidays, which is six days. The other time I traveled was at Easter and that was two weeks with a holiday. It says a lack of connection and openness as elected town supervisor. Nicole, when I'm not here at the office, how often do I talk to you?
Every day.
Every single day, every morning. Jessie, I talk to many times, maybe not every day, but I do talk to Nicole every day. When asked a question, you divert or misdirect the actual question or simply give no comment as your answers. The citizens of this town chose you as their supervisor because they felt you would help fix the issues in the town and be a voice for them, but regrettably, that does not happen. I always thought that my elected officials would behave maturely and wisely, which brings me to my next question. As town supervisor, what do you think would happen with the personal message you sent to my mother about my statement on Facebook was going to accomplish? I first sent that message to her directly. She put a statement on Facebook as Susan said. I first tried to send that message to her. Then I was not, that message was not allowed to go through because she didn't accept it. I sent a message to her mother and basically what the message was, she had said we had funneled millions of dollars into CDs, okay? We put $200,000 in a CD and we put $300,000 in a CD and we did that on April 19th of 2019. We have done no CDs this year. We made a motion in April of this year to do a $300,000 CD and Nicole has written an explanation because that's, that's in our agenda as far as what happened. So, and what, what the answer to that was is that we looked at doing a CD in April, we looked at the rates that were terrible, and then we had a budget, an emergency budget meeting in relation to COVID-19. And we realized how much our sales tax was going to be cut. We realized how much everything was going to be cut and we did not get a CD. We didn't do it. Yes, we made a motion to do it, but with Nicole's advice and the board's advice, we chose not to do it because we didn't think we had that money laying around that we could lock up. So we did not do that.
Why, why did we choose to get CDs to begin with? And has any board in the past ever gotten CDs? Why didn't we do that?
I don't know the answer to any board in the past. All's I know is the answer to the last five or more years. I'm going to say longer, I'm not sure how much longer than that, but Nicole, you've been doing the book since 15. It has never been done. And we took out two CDs on April 19th. And how much interest do we have to date from those CDs?
Over $12,000.
Over $12,000 that we've never had before and that I can remember.
Are they locked in for like three years or what?
They're locked in for two different terms.
Okay, I just...
Had we not, had we not done that?
Because we, we staggered them.
Right.
Just for the reason...
That's what I'm asking, because you said it.
In case, in case we had a problem. That's why we did a 200 and a 300 and not just a 500, okay?
And the mayors also agreed that if we needed it, we could get out of it, no problem.
Yep.
Had we not done that?
What?
What would have occurred?
It's added that checking account and make no entry.
Okay. How much total money was there in that checking account that we used, we used this money for CDs? How much money was there?
I'm not sure, Nicole, a million dollars?
So it was around...
Sitting there.
It was around half?
Yep.
Okay, so it was all?
No.
We left ourselves a cushion in case something happened?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to, let's explain that.
Second, when Councilman Stein did the same statement as mentioned by what right to use her wife had to contact my place of employment and ask for me to receive reprimand because of my opinions. The statement was made by me, that was a declaration I made, not my place of employment's. I think Susan explained very well that she has not talked to her place of employment and asked them to reprimand her. So that's not true. The reason I air out my opinions on a public forum is because I am concerned citizens of this town and have right to say what's something when it doesn't seem it should be said. What has transpired since I made the statement on Facebook, I consider it a form of retaliation and intimidation against me for, for evoking my First Amendment right. As you can see, this retaliation is all it is, is different members of the board telling the, telling the truth that we know from our documents and from our, you know, for instance, having the loans for Redwood being paid off. Well, they're not paid off. They're not paid off till 2029. And we, we've known that for a long time because we tried to refinance those loans at a lower rate today and we weren't allowed to, Bob, because they're not callable, we found out, correct?
Yeah, I don't know, I was just asking.
So, so the retaliation is just us trying to state the facts, the true facts that we know from our books. My statement includes concerns that the town has funneled millions of dollars into CDs. You see from what was just said, and Nicole has provided documentary proof here tonight of those CDs. If you go online, you can see our balance sheet, it shows the two CDs. One's $200,000 and one's $300,000, not millions. This is because I was told by more than a few of the town employees that it happened. I have looked, I have looked through and watched the board meetings on April 8th. The board did just that, $300 on Water Town Savings Bank. Please show or explain to us the public, what other CDs does the town have? Well, I just explained the other CDs that the town had and I just explained that on April 8th, we did make a motion, but we didn't follow through. And I told you the reasons that we didn't follow through.
So you just have two then?
I'm sorry.
You just have two then?
Just have two.
Two CDs.
And we're taking out April 19th, 2019. Okay. If we have more than two CDs that are reflected on December 31st, 2019 in the balance sheet, why are they not on the budget or even amended into the budget? Well, the ones that are on the balance sheet were on the balance sheet, December 31st, 2019. They were clearly on there. You can go online and look at our balance sheet and see them. Where's the $5 million loan that the town, town voted on? Where did it go or did the town take out the loan? The town never took out the loan. When the town, Jim, Jim, you were part of this, when the town put that on the proposition to, to do the purchase of Bonnie Castle Stables and the $5 million, we...
5.5.
Yeah. We right up front said, we're not going to borrow $5.5 million to do this project. We're going to apply for grants. We've applied for five or six grants is what we've applied, or what we're applying for. And we don't plan on doing anything up there until we get some grant monies. And board members, jump in if you have different opinions than I. I'm just saying things that we've talked about as a board that I know. Because nobody, we, we looked at the numbers, what it was going to cost the town if we did borrow money to make that facility usable and it scared us. So that we want to sit back, we want to apply for grants and when we don't get them, we'll reapply for grants. If you've watched the papers for the last 10 years, that's what Clayton, Clayton does all the time. They apply, they reapply, and when they get some grants added up, then they go do a project.
Do you have a grant writer?
Yep.
Yes.
Where's the $5 million? The Bonnie Castle Stables, where are the plans for Bonnie Castle Stables Rec Center? We voted on, do we own the property? I think we talked about that tonight. We had a, we had an environmental audit done. The environmental audit named some environmental issues up there. And we will not, and I am again speaking for myself. I will not vote to buy that property up there if there's an environmental issue, just one. And there's, there's five or six. They're not super serious, they could be taken care of. He has put together a plan to have them remediated by a professional engineer firm. And I've, and Bob and his assistant have been very involved in getting this information and advising us and we all know that we're not going to, we're not going to move forward unless this thing is super clean. Because we don't feel we can put the town in a liability situation. Do we acquire the property at all? The town is listed as the owner? No, not listed as the owner. When has there been a Redwood youth group? From what I remember, the organization was involved. We had some people from Redwood come to us last year before budget season and they asked us about having some monies for Redwood youth. Because the Redwood youth used to have movies at the Fire Hall every week or every month or whatever. So we said to the two ladies, oh, put together a, a budget proposal and come to us, and they did. And how much did we budget?
A little bit a thousand.
Yeah, small amount. I'm not sure, I don't have the budget right in front of me, but we did budget a small amount for the Redwood youth to try to do movies at the Fire Hall or whatever else they wanted to do. Obviously, March came and COVID-19 came. And our other youth group for the town, nobody has done anything. Everything is totally inactive, no money is being spent in any of them. The town board through the years has lost a sense of its community. Our speaking, some town board owners feel it's acceptable to bully and berate other citizens for speaking out and raising questions. I mean, as I said earlier, we, we, all we're doing is when things are said that we have facts on paper that show that it's not true, we just try to get those facts out. That's what we've been doing. Not explaining the reasons clearly for the need to appoint two positions. While we've, we had open meetings that were online that we talked about this. I believe we had two that were online and those meetings that are online, you can go back and you can review, you go to our website and you can play those back, which obviously people have done. And it, and it tells a lot of the different reasons and a lot of the different things that we feel are the reasons to change these positions to appointed. And between now and November, I'm sure we're going to put out a lot more things of what we feel are the reasons. And we're going to put out reasons that will be pros and cons to, you know, to the deal. Because in the position that we're in, I don't feel that we can, can say it has to be this way. We need to let the voters make that decision and that's why we're letting the voters make that decision. It's the same thing with Bonnie Castle. None of us wanted it on our backs to go and say, yes, we're going to spend $5 million up there and do this. And Jim, you were a big part of that and we said, let's let the voters decide. And that's what we're doing now. We're going to let the voters decide.
I have one question. I don't mean to, it just came to me. I think this is probably answered by you or Mike. I know for two years before I resigned from the board that we were given a grant or working on a grant and my wife was working on the grant for New Zamboni. Are we anywhere closer to getting that or we, or what's the status of that?
This is the, for the Zamboni?
Yes.
Yeah.
Like most things with the state and grant and state budget, everything's kind of just...
We've had a couple of our grants. I guess I'm going to have to say pulled. That, that grant was not pulled, but it's in limbo. Rob, we had a grant for Redwood, for Route 12 Sewer pulled a month ago. That doesn't mean that we're, we're hoping we're going to get it back. But there's some political games going on between the state and federal government and that grant is very important to us. $660,000 is important. Without that grant, feasibility for Route 12 Sewer really changes it, doesn't it, Rob?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's kind of where we are with the grants. That's the only comments I have to make about that letter and I've pretty much read most of it here. Anybody who's more than willing to take a look at it if they want, we have copies of it. Anybody else have anything to say?
I did get a text from another, before we move into the regular agenda, from another taxpayer, Andrew Nelson, Village Resident. He said, is it possible to change the town court term to two years?
Attorney Sly?
To change the elected term to two years?
I believe that's what he said.
I don't think so. I think that's state statute or it's a four-year term. For elected. If it's appointed, it can be two years.
So you can, you can shorten it to two years? You can't?
If, all right. I believe it's, it's an elected position, it has to be four years. If the public votes to change the position to appointed, it can be any term that the town board desires. It used to be it had to be two years, but that's been, it could be whatever term the town board determines.
Because the supervisor position is two years. But you could vote to change that to four years because I believe Clayton did. Or no, somebody else did, somebody. And actually it was, they tried to, they tried to do that in the village a long time ago.
I, I'm not aware that changing the term of office is something that is covered by the municipal overall law. Maybe it is.
Yeah. Okay.
In this manual, it says it can be a two-year term.
I mean, I guess that's something that Attorney Sly will ask you to look into.
That probably also is subject to mandatory referendum, my guess.
Yep.
Uh-uh, absolutely. Because I do remember reading about that.
Because I got the same text from Andrew Nelson.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look into it.
If it can be, then it's statute or...
Are the propositions that are in place at this time, are they locked in stone or are they, are they not?
Are they locked in stone or are they what?
Are they, can they be changed at this time or are they already been written and they're ready to go to general election? In other words, if you have already had them written because of what Sandy said, can you go back in and change it? The proposition?
Not, not at this point. Because they were adopted by local law, was subject to a public hearing. And then in order to be on the ballot in November, we had to have them submitted by the street board.
That's right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go to the, we'll go to the seeker process for the street grant. And we're going to, gentleman from EDR is here and he's going to kind of lead us through this.
Sure.
Judy?
Hi, I'm just, Father, my name is Judy Fulmer, I'm a village trustee. I'm here in support of the streetscape speaker and the public hearing. My problem is, I didn't think I'd be here this long. I have my 91-year-old father at home in a wheelchair with care till seven, or six o'clock. So I am, as a, as a shuki, as a village trustee, happy to participate with the town in the streetscape grant. Anything I can do, continue to do, or shuki, you know, we're, we're here to help, but I have to go. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks to town.
Thank you for coming. Judy and Judy and Chuk here, the two village board members that have been very much involved with the, with the streetscape grant that the town got for $1.2 million. And, and Mike and I, and actually a couple other board members have been involved with it for the town side. And we have people from public, from the village and people from public, from the town that are also on the committee. And we've been meeting... And we've been meeting every couple weeks. And we're going to have to have a public hearing that we're going to try to set the date on tonight for the town and village people to come and ask questions and see what we're proposing to do. And we have to do a secret process and a couple other things tonight as part of the framework for the deal.
So come your leave, go home, and watch your work.
Thank you. So this is Charles Pryor, and he is, works for Environmental Design and Research out of Syracuse that is helping us with this grant along with DANK, which is the Development Authority of the North Country.
So tonight's action for the board here, we'll briefly go over kind of the general secret process, but we're into the design phase of the project now. So we got to follow through with the state's, you know, regulated protocol on completing the state environmental and quality review. So we, we prepare the, you'll see an item two there, the EAF form, so the environmental assessment forms. The, the regulated paper, it has to be completed as part of the process. So we started this process roughly about a month ago. We had completed the environmental assessment form, part one, called the long form, about their papers long about the project. Those were mailed out to various involved agencies. Those are agencies like the DEC, US Army Corps agencies that are determined to be, you know, involved with a project from a funding or permitting aspect. There was no exceptions taken to the, to the town being lead agent. As we understand, the town and village have an, and I am in the project and the town acts as lead agent for, for the management of the project. So the, the 30-day lead agency solicitation window is coming on without, without exceptions. So we prepared parts two and three, they were provided to the town, you know, last week for, for your use. And along with that is a, a resolution to declare lead agency and also declare a negative declaration on the project, which basically means there are no significant environmental impacts anticipated with the project. So like Supervisor said, we'll be back here probably mid-September, end of September. We'll figure out the right date. We'll go through the specifics, some further details of the project.
Okay. So what do you need us to do first?
So the first step will be to pass the resolution on the lead agency and the negative declaration. And then the EAF form, part three requires your signature after the resolution.
So we need a motion to?
Can I be clear on that? You still first need to do your evaluation of the long-form environmental assessment form. I know the EDR filled it out, but it's actually your job to answer the questions. So you probably don't have part two.
No.
Alright, let me approach for a minute. You've done this before.
Huh?
You've done this before.
Yeah. This is a short form?
No, it's a long form.
Your job is to read the numbered paragraphs, okay? And ask the question, and ask the board to give you an answer. I realize EDR has filled it out, but it's your job to actually do the...
To go through each one?
Yep, just the numbered questions, okay? So...
Okay. Okay, full environmental assessment form, part two, identification of potential project impacts. Impact on land, proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Yes or no? No?
I don't have the form, I'm sorry.
Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. It will?
We've been, we fill out the forms for you. If we answered any of those questions with a positive, part three explains it in further detail.
Okay.
So I would say yes, because we are changing, we're changing stuff, so...
Yep. Yes. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in a modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Cliffs, fossils, minerals, caves. No?
No.
Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. Proposed action may... Yes? Everybody okay with yes? Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. We're building the sidewalks and everything is around the river, so it will affect those.
These wasn't part of this project, it's different from your ready project.
Right. Okay.
So no wetlands involved, and well, we're proposing a different...
Correct, we'll be, the docks are obviously on the water pond.
Impact on groundwater, number four, the proposed action may result in a new or additional use of groundwater or, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. No? Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in development of lands subject to flooding. Have yes.
I'm sure.
Oh, it's in the flood plain?
Correct.
Okay.
The dock.
Impacts on air, the proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. No. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. No. Impact on agricultural resources, the proposed action may impact agricultural resources. No. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action can, are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. No. Stop me if I'm wrong.
I would say no.
Impact on historic archaeological resources, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource.
No.
Yes? What's that?
There's some show up on the state registry within the context of the projects within the village, but there's going to be no impact to them due to the roadside walks and docks.
Okay.
But no, no to small impact, basically none.
So on the yeses, do we have more questions?
Yes, so part three of the EAF.
Yeah.
Explanation of YGS.
Okay. Impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. No. Impact on critical environmental areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. No. Impact on transportation, the proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. No. Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. No. Impact on noise, odor, and light, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. No. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health for exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. No. Consistency with community plan, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. No. Consistency with community character, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. No. That's all we have. So now...
Well, the consultant has prepared answers to the, or resolutions to the issues that were raised as yes. Alright. So, let me do this for you. So where the letters are shown that there were a yes, there's an explanation, okay?
Yeah.
And they do that for, so 1A and C were yes, 3D was yes, 9A was yes, 10A was yes, and 10B was yes. And so...
Read those.
Those are explanations to provide to the public, yeah.
Okay. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of its existing ground surface. The area of disservice is primarily associated with existing infrastructure, which has previously developed locations in flat paved areas or road edges. Therefore, these areas will be avoided to the maximum extent practicable and adverse impacts are not anticipated. The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the bed or banks of any other water body. The proposed project will replace existing docking and boat ramps within the St. Lawrence River and its tributaries. However, the project is a replacement in kind of the existing facilities and will not impact surface water quality. Proposed action may be visible from any official designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. The proposed project is located within five miles of Wells Island, Mary Island, Greenpoint State Parks, Lake The Isles, St. Lawrence River, Edgewood, and Westminster Park. However, views of the project site, if available, will not change substantially. The proposed project consists of upgrades and improvements to the existing facilities. Changes in use or intensity of the uses of the site are not anticipated. Therefore, adverse changes in views, if any, are anticipated to be minimal. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historical Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of New York State Office in Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory. The request for project review was submitted to SHPO on 7/23/2020. SHPO responded on 8/4, stating that based upon this review is the opinion of the New York SHPO that no historic properties, including archaeological and/or historic offices, resources will be affected by this undertaking. The proposed project is anticipated to result in long-term recreational improvements upon review of the information recorded in the FEAF as well as information presented in the preliminary design reports. Considering both the magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact, it is determined that this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. At such determination of non-significance, a negative declaration may be undertaken by this lead agency. Determination of significance, type one unlisted actions, seeker status unlisted, identified positions, EAF complete for this project, part one, two, and three.
So now you have in front of you a resolution that was prepared by EDR that would declare you as the lead agent. The consultants already explained that letters went out to potentially involved agencies to see if they had any objection to you serving as lead agency. As lead agency have done, a review of the part two of the EAF, the long form environmental assessment form, those questions that were answered with positives, you have explanations are contained in part three of the environmental assessment form. So the resolution then would accept lead agency status, declare lead agency status, acknowledge that you've reviewed the form, and declare that there is, there are no potential significant adverse environmental impacts resulting from this project. So if you would, now that you have the resolution in front of you, somebody should introduce it, second it, vote on it, and then obviously it'll become part of the minutes of the meeting. But also, there is a, that form you just read, part three is to be signed by you, and then given to E, given to EDR so they've got it, so that you will complete your environmental review.
So we need a resolution.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution and it's for the secret, to be lead agent.
Motion by Sandy?
I'll flag it.
You? Second, second by John, any further discussion? Vote call, vote, bow.
Sure.
Yep.
Supervisor Redwee?
Yes.
Councilman John Sun?
Yes.
Councilman Steady Fudo?
Yes.
Councilman Mike Faya?
Yes.
And the asset is Ron Tausser.
Resolution passed.
Sign that and make sure EDR has it when it needs. No, they'll take care of it. Make a copy. You do the publication too, is it?
That's what that means. Right? Did you hear what I said? I said, this just means we have to pay the bills. Back with that.
You all set, Charles?
Yeah, I am. We'll work on, we'll coordinate a date for the...
For the public hearing.
You might want, you might want a copy of that. You might want a copy of that. You want the original?
I can ask Nicole to do a copy of that. So we had to set a public hearing date. We were thinking Charles would be okay for our next meeting, the fourth Wednesday of, the fourth Wednesday of September. That date is... And do it 15 minutes before our regular board meeting. Everybody okay with that? And if it goes, carries on, then we obviously delay our, our board meeting.
That's going to be September 17, you're saying?
One, two, three, or 23rd, I get.
Oh, 23rd, okay, yep.
We get to 23rd. At 4:45. So we need a, we need a motion to set that public hearing for that day and time here in town.
Motion to have it on the 23rd?
Motion by Mike?
At 5:45, or what, no?
4:45.
4:45, yep.
Second, by John, any discussion? Sandy, are you okay with that date and time?
Yep.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. Motion passed. Are we good, Charles? Is everything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get that back for us?
So that brings us to number four, which is the Goose Bay Ramp, the ready project update from Rob Campi.
So the Goose Bay Boat Ramp project, we have a, we have a call every couple weeks with the Department of State, which Brent participates. We're getting ready to submit our 60% design drawings to the state. I'm not sure if we talked about this last time, the wetland delineation did show some wetlands adjacent, where we want to make the parking lot bigger. There's some wetlands just off to the north of that where we want to expand, and also where the pathway goes. So we're going to re, kind of relocate the, the parking lot, not relocate, make it a little different shape to be able to, I, I think the best option is to allow the boats and trailers to be able to back into spaces, stay out of the wetland area. And then the walkway will probably move up next to the road. There's room, Mike, at the, kind of, there's a big pine tree right there beside the road. I think we can say the pine tree. There's still enough room for a nice five-foot walk down through the top of that bank to get people, so people don't have to walk out on the flytop to, and they go back after they park their boats and trailers and walk back to the, oh, to park the truck and trailer, I should say. So I'm going to review that with Brian and Mike, but I think probably next week we'll submit our drawings for, for review. And we have to have a pre-permitting meeting or a call with the Army Corps, and the DEC, and DOS, and OGS, every agency under the sun that wants to be part of, part of it. So it's moving along. Expect we'll be able to wrap it up, bid a, for construction in the spring.
Thanks, Rob. Number seven, burn trailer cleanup. Okay, so we've been dealing with this trailer at Parkers Trailer Fort that had burned, and neighbors have been very upset about the rubbish and everything that's going on there with animals. So we went through the legal process so that now we can handle it ourselves. So we went through the legal process so that now we can handle it ourselves. And we solicited prices from three people, three companies to clean it up as were required by our procurement policy. And I've got these three prices that were delivered today. The first one is Charles Fram for cleanup of $4,400. The second one is Rice Newberry Construction for a price of $2,800. And the third one is JP Excavation from Redwood for $2,500. And all of them are the complete cleanup and, and hauling away of all debris. So we need to make a motion if everybody's happy and.
What was Roy's, what was the very?
What's that? The lowest one was the JP Excavation out of Redwood for $2,500. The next one was Newberry for $2,800. And the fourth one was Charles Fram for $4,400.
I'll make a motion that we go with JP Construction out of.
Motion by Sandy to use JP Excavation. Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? None.
Is there any kind of a liability issue there?
There's what?
Any kind of a liability issue with them? We got insurance?
I think they're, I'm sure they're gonna have to have, we'll make sure they have insurance that covers them while they're doing it.
Are we gonna give them a timeframe of when it's gotta be done?
They all pretty much had said they could do it within the next month and probably sooner. I don't think it's a huge job.
Okay.
Who is the paying for that? You try to go after the landowner?
Yeah, it gets re-lebbed onto their taxes.
What?
It gets re-lebbed onto their taxes.
Okay, I was just curious.
Streetscape Committee meeting update. I think everybody heard a lot about the streetscape proceeding, that we're doing sidewalks, we're doing benches, we're doing trash receptacles, we're doing lighting, some very badly needed sidewalks in the Village of Alexandria Bay. No private sidewalks are being done, they're all going to be municipal sidewalks. There's a real nice sidewalk that's gonna go from the pavilion on the waterfront all the way down to the water plant, down that hill, which everybody sees people that go to the beach and they all walk in the road. So there's gonna be a five-foot wide sidewalk down through there, which will be, which is very badly needed. That's basically, a lot of the other parts of the streetscape have not been decided, but that has been decided. There's gonna be upgrades and work done at Thompson Park with sidewalks on both sides of that. I think that Shooky and the village are gonna put new fence up there, they're gonna do some improvements to the Thompson Park. That's pretty much the update that I have. Number nine's a milfoil treatment update. Mud Lake was treated for milfoil with herbicide two weeks ago, and Goose Bay was treated a week ago. That, those treatments are done. It was testing every 24 hours and 72 hours and afterwards for the chemical and everything met the DEC requirements. The DEC was there both days that we did these and monitored everything that we did. The other item on number nine is Eco Harvester. That, this grant that we got for $600,000 was for the milfoil treatments and for an Eco Harvester and for the conveyor that we bought a year ago that's sitting at the transfer site. Those were all paid for 100% by grant monies. That conveyor is to be used with the Eco Harvester, and we have an issue with the Eco Harvester because the company is behind on the, on the construction, construction of it. And most recently, we've been told that we hope to have it by November, which means that it'll be a, next year before we use it. Because this has been in the paper, I've had a lot of people from Swan Bay and all other areas, bays, that have called and want us to take the Eco Harvester there and do their weeds. We currently have a list that we're working on, but because this is a grant issue and it's funded by the state, we have to first use the Eco Harvester in Mud Lake and in Goose Bay, which is where the grant originated. That's pretty much the update on that. Mud Lake Trail, now you agree crossing. Mike, you know much about that?
Uh, we have a property owner that abuts, his property, abuts the town property, which is the old railroad tracks, which is the Redwood Trail. And he has property on both sides. And currently, how he accesses his property on the Mud Lake side is he comes down to the trail and he drives his golf cart or four wheeler, whatever he has, I'm not, and then, so then he can access his, his lakefront property. And what he would like to do to prevent the motorized vehicle on the trail is his, move his access point to a location where it's directly across from his, his lake property. So it'll just matter of just driving straight across town property. And I know I looked at it, I believe Sandy has looked at the spot as well, and her, Brent and Ron, John probably able to picture what, what this location looks like.
So I checked into the insurance end of it because he has to do some work. I had conversations with Attorney Sly about that, and he is going to either name us as additionally insured or whatever his insurance company allows him to do because he has gotta cut a little bit of brush. It's really all it is, probably not more than a 20 minutes worth of work according to him, to go 90 degrees across the trail. So we need a, a motion to, to allow him to do that.
I'll make that motion below, cut some brush and go across the trail.
Motion by John.
I'll take that.
Second by Sandy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Discussion, I think it's a little bit more than a 20-minute job. But so long as the insurance, and like I said, he named us as a rider, I see no issues or problems with it. And if he can get work done that fast, I've got a couple projects that I'd like to hire him for, just saying. But I have no problem.
Okay.
While, while we're on the subject of the Redwood Trail, I know Rob's been kinda sidelined with COVID-19, kinda back in the game. I was talking to our grant writer that's working on the Redwood Trail, and she would like you to contact her, her, so that she can kinda move her hand with that stuff.
Judy.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so any further discussion on the crossing the trail? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. Twelve is purchase the propane tanks.
You can skip over one.
Did I?
Number 11.
Oh, I'm sorry, out of district redwood sewer user request for hookup. Yep, you're right.
Five and six, too. I don't know if you already answered those questions. Five and six.
Six, he already said.
Oh, yeah, you did skip over one. Which one? Oh, number five, property seller, rentals?
Yeah.
I guess that's just gonna be an update from you, Bob. Where do we stand? You're waiting for the meets and bounds?
Right, we, we got the survey from the favor, they didn't give a meet and bounce description, so we don't have a way to convey the property till we get that. When we get it, it's easy to do.
Yep. That, that was the, that was the property that we put out for bid up on. We accepted his bid. Okay. And the ring schedule, we pretty much, we've talked about that. You okay with that, Jim?
Yeah.
So we're back to the out of district redwood sewer user, number 11. And we've had these people that have come to us that wanna hook into our sewer, they're not in the district. So we have two choices to either bring them into the district and change the district boundaries or create an out of district user. And we have to check into our original formation of that district to see if we can create an out of district user, is that right?
Outside user agreement, yeah. I, I just gotta look at the sewer limits.
So we'll have, have you do that and then.
Yeah, this just came up yesterday, it's not like I.
Yep, yep. Well, these people wanted to do this six years ago, and they filled out all the paperwork and did all the forms, and then they, they were gonna build a house over there where they wanna do this. And they had, then they decided not to build the house, and now we got a letter from them just recently that now they're gonna, they'd like to build the house and like to hook up. I think, Rob, you were involved in that process.
Yeah, I went up through the board and I looked at it, way the heck up on the top of the hill. I think Jamie might have looked at it with me. And, and, yeah, so the deal was they had to do all the work to do the, to make the connection basically, and be responsible for the connection.
Yep. Okay. There's a pot there though, right?
There was a pot there, Jamie's.
Well, they have a duplex pot now, you can hook in that one.
Oh, duplex.
Oh, that's right, he'll, he'll go right into that duplex. Yep.
Okay, number 12. Trying not to skip it. Purchase propane tanks from Northern, we've been dealing with this for three or four months. Both Nicole and I spent lots of time on the phone talking to these propane companies. As you know, we got prices from North Shore, North Shore and Marabato, and we had two other suppliers that were putting propane in these tanks that was charging us ungodly price. So we found out that propane that was delivered at 6:06 a gallon was to two 30-pound tanks at the Highway Barn, right, Mike?
Yeah, that we never used.
What were they used for?
They were used for hot water.
But you don't use them anymore.
We haven't used them since they put the furnaces in the back of the jury there.
So Nicole, what did we find because of what they're gonna charge us to take those back? What did we find the best thing to do is to use the propane that's in those tanks?
We can use them for the winter when we steam off places.
Cause they wanna charge us $150 per tank to pick those tanks up if they have propane in them.
We can steam pipes over in the winter, to be honest with you. I didn't know they were filling them up, tell you the truth, till you told me about it.
Well, we, it took a lot of phone calls for us to figure out what was going on.
Yeah.
Cause I kept saying that the Highway Barn, finally 30-gallon tanks. I said, well, let's call Mike, and then that's when you told me that. What I'm wondering also, Mike, is can those tanks be used for the Zamboni or at the rig if you can't use them?
No, they're vapor, they're, they're vapor, not liquid. They're different. Zamboni takes liquid propane.
Like I say, we can use them in the winter when we steam pipes up.
Okay. Okay. Municipal office and Route 12 water pump station have MX fuel propane. Spoke with MX on August 25th, the manager told me that they could sell us propane for 90, 94 cents a gallon. This is actually 14 cents less than our current bid with Marabato. The cost to switch out the two tanks would be $2,400. That's, that's what we were looking at, is switching out these tanks because of the bid. And obviously not cost effective at all. The Redwood water tanks are filled by suburban propane, I don't know how got so many propane companies in here at once, but here we are. I inquired as to how much the, would bill us for propane if we left their tanks there, and I was told someone would get back to me by the end of the week. It would cost $1,050 to replace those 2,000-gallon tanks for, with a 330-gallon tank. So essentially what we're saying here is that hopefully they'll give us a reasonable quote on the propane, and we won't replace tanks and have to spend thousands of dollars to replace tanks.
Do we have, we have contracts, I mean, we have three vendors, do we have contracts that lock us in?
Only contract we have is Marabato with a bid.
That's what I thought. So why don't we bid out all that and get a single contractor at a better price?
We did that last year, right, Jesse?
Those two didn't get included in the bid for some reason.
That's what I'm driving at.
What?
Those, the other two didn't get included in the bid, so that's why we only ended up that, they bid on one. Next year, why don't we see about getting them all?
Well, then you would have to switch tanks. Then you would have to switch things.
Okay.
And you have that extra expense again.
Okay, that was why, probably why we didn't do it.
Exactly.
That's right.
How much cheaper could you get the propane for if you did it all of them?
The problem is they're thousand gallons, a couple of these tanks are thousand gallons. Couple of these tanks are hooked to generators right out there. They burn 10 gallons a year because they do a tester. So they don't wanna put a thousand or 2,000-gallon tank because they got our low bid every year in December or January. They don't wanna put a $1,500 tank out there that we don't use any propane in. They'd love to do it if we're gonna use a heck of a bunch of propane. They don't want to, and you can't blame them. So we're trying to adjust, the people that have the tanks here now, which is the MX and the Suburban, we're just trying to get them to be down at reasonable price. And the other thing we did with them is we put our accounts on will call, because they were coming, they were delivering us four gallons of propane and charging us $6 a gallon, along with a bunch of other fees. So that, that's where we're at with that. And that's been a, a long deal we've been working on. Budget transfers. Nicole's got some budget transfers here. General A, we're gonna debit $500 from Marina and Docks, and we wanna credit $500 Community Service CE due to increased costs to parking at Goose Bay, newspaper ads and supplies for signs. General B, we're gonna debit Public Health Contractual, and we're gonna credit Enhanced Playgrounds, $50. Highway DA, we're gonna debit Tractor Morale Lease, $27,000. We're gonna credit Principal Payment Tractor to move budget amount to proper line, same account number, different name. Highway DB, we're gonna debit uniforms by $600, and we're gonna credit New York State Retirement by $600 for increasing uniform expenses due to mass purchase of COVID-19. Some of that stuff is supposedly reimbursable, the COVID-19.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Edgewood Water, we're gonna debit $10 Transmission Distribution CE, and we're gonna credit Administration CE, $10 to reconcile increased spending with the same fund. Last one I have is Route 12 Water. We're gonna debit Route 12 Water Equipment, $10. We're gonna credit Transmission Distribution CE, $10 to reconcile increased spending within the same fund. So I need a motion and a second to accept these budget transfers.
Mike, why don't you approve that?
You make the motion by Mike?
I'll, I'll second it.
Second by John?
Yeah, I am.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. We've gotta sign that. Hold, pass that down. Water committee update. We've sent letters with our last water billing that we wanna start water committees, our water committee for our five water districts. We were hoping to have people from every water district be on the committee, one or two people. We have three names as of right now from three different water districts, and I think that. What's that? You got one more?
Yep.
So we have four names?
Judy Kornick, Ted Schur.
Judy Kornick.
Yep, for Otter Street.
We got Judy Kornick, we got Jim Duran, we got Irene Tibbles, and we got BJ Mojer.
Okay, so that, that covers all the water districts except for Edgewood.
Yep. So we can, we should probably call.
Cause there's only one user.
Mr. and Mrs. Ridley and ask them if they wanna be on.
Right.
Okay. That's where we stand with that. We get this, that completed and we'll work on having a first meeting. Current certificate of deposit status with dates of inception, number, kind of been through As of 8/25/20, the Town of Alexandria has two CDs. The CDs were taken out April 18th, 2019. One of the CDs was open at $300,000 and the other was $200,000. Since their setup, the Town of Alexandria has gained $12,344 and 2 cents in interest. In April 2020, the Town of Alexandria made a motion to open another CD worth $300,000. To date, this has not been set up. Due to the terrible interest rates being offered COVID-19 and the uncertainty about sales tax revenues, the town decided to hold off on the transfer of money out of the checking Wages and benefits estimated for the last four town supervisors, there've been a lot of questions asked about that. The wages and benefits for town supervisors, we've gone back to the year 2000, so we have 21 years of wages, health insurance, mileage expense, and cell phone use. That, they're all different categories that some supervisors have used and some have not. Back in 2000, supervisor total cost or wages, including all benefits, was $14,975. It went up slowly from then, at, starting in 2004, the total wages and benefits to a supervisor were $49,218, and then they continued to stay in that range and go up. The highest I see. The highest I see is in two thousand fourteen, the total was sixty thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, and then it goes to two thousand eighteen. The total wages and benefits were twelve thousand dollars. In two thousand nineteen, the total wages and benefits were twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And two thousand twenty, the total wages and benefits, as I said earlier, are forty-two thousand three hundred and seventeen. Past supervisors had health insurance, they had mileage expense and they had cell phone, cell phone use. Not everybody used all those categories, a few people did. Um, currently, since two thousand eighteen, the town board decided in two thousand eighteen not to allow the supervisor to have health insurance, not allow, not to allow him to have a mileage expense and not to allow him to have a cell phone expense. And that's the way it's been for three years.
What year was that, bro?
Huh?
What year was that, that they denied, uh, your, the, uh?
What year was what?
What year was it when they denied that? Okay, thanks.
The highest year?
No, what year they denied?
That's okay, I wrote it down, but I just want, I didn't, I wanted to know what year they denied you the medical insurance.
We, this board did it in two thousand eighteen.
Definitely.
At, at budget time, we denied health insurance, mileage expense and cell phone expense.
For?
The town supervisor.
Okay, so, so everybody here, does anybody here have medical insurance?
It was whoever the board was back then.
Oh.
That did it.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Now you have medical insurance for you.
No, no, I read you every year. So two thousand eighteen, nineteen and twenty, there's been no health insurance, mileage expense or cell phone. And I'm pretty sure we've already started the budget that isn't gonna change for twenty-one. Gonna stay right.
Yeah, I was just wondering what year.
Yeah. Uh, bed tax summary with newest income, seventeen. This is not good. The second quarter two thousand twenty bed tax revenue was two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars compared to nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars last year. So we're down sixty-eight percent decrease in bed tax. These are some of the things that we were afraid of along with sales tax, which is why we didn't put monies into CDs. Cause those revenues are taking a big hit. Eighteen, window shades for the meeting room. I know you guys have, and girls have seen the meetings we've had here and when that sun gets over there, we can't see. So I'm asking if we can buy some cheap window shades at Walmart.
Sure. I don't know why they didn't do it a long time ago.
Yeah. Well, like I say, with that sunset, it glares in and you can't.
These windows, that, nothing happens over there.
Nothing happens over there, no. It's, it's all right here. It's really just these couples, so.
It should be very expensive, I think, four shades?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I need a motion. How much are we gonna spend? How much are you giving permission? Sandy's gonna be in charge of the shades.
I'm gonna, I just bought all shades in my house and I'm not gonna go to Walmart and buy cheap ones.
You're talking at least forty dollars.
I was thinking fifty dollars, it's gonna be fifty dollars to get decent ones that go in there, that are gonna be retractable, that aren't gonna break in a year.
You're talking forty or fifty, yeah.
So fifty dollars, okay?
A piece.
Fifty dollars a piece?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Man, I guess you're not going to Walmart, are you?
No, you're not, but you want something that the sun's not gonna destroy. You want something that the sun's not gonna destroy. You gotta pay for, you gotta pay for it.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion. Get blind for up to fifty dollars a piece for those four windows.
I'll second that. Second by John, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Teamsters negotiation. Bob, where do we stand on that? Did you guys set up?
No, I mean.
I saw the emails go back and forth. I saw the dates that were put down.
I can't remember why that fell apart. Obviously, I mean, I know the schedule, we need to sit down, there's no question.
Okay, I'll, I'll send another email and see what, because each person had sent in their flexibility dates. And a bunch of people had the same, so it was gonna work. And once we, once we figured that out on our end, we need to pass it on to the union steward.
I'm fine. I'm glad it was.
Cell phone for the water operator. Jamie's had real problems with his cell phone, how long have you had it?
Oh, probably six years.
I don't know how you can see on the screen, cause it, that's bad. Um, and Jamie is proposing for him to go get his own cell phone with his own plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just wanted, I want this number.
And no charge to the town. And have the water operator's current cell phone number tied into that phone. Which I, no expense to the town, his deal.
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I ask, Jamie, I guess the only thing I ask is that when you retire, in how many years? That we can have that number back? Or, I don't know, what does everybody think?
No, that's a good point.
Well, I'm sure when you retire, you doesn't want that number. What's that? When you retire, you doesn't want that number, right?
No, I just, it, it, I, I don't wanna have to carry two cell phones.
I, I agree. I agree.
I'm, I'm the only one in the town that has a town cell phone and I don't think that's right.
And his phone rings off the hook with town business, cause I've been around him. And the other thing his phone rings off the hook with is your water tower and your pump stations all have systems that whenever anything goes wrong, they call his cell phone. At whatever hour of the day, right?
I'll, they won't call me every day.
Yep.
When the pumps come on, when I turn on.
So I'm fine with letting him do his own phone. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Permission for justices to apply for a J C, J cap grant for thirty thousand dollars. They applied for one of these last year and they got it for all new shelving and work in our room there. And now they're, they'd like to apply for another one. So I need a motion to give them permission to apply for that J cap grant. Motion by John? Second by Sandy, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Uh, adopt LGS one retention and disposition of records. Jesse, you have that one?
Yes. Um, so we're gonna do a resolution so that the town can, um, dispose of, or destroy anything from the archives in the back. It's, um, we used to have the MU one and the MI one and it has replaced both of those. So by January first of two thousand twenty-one, it has to be passed, um, in New York State by every member of the town. So we're going by the regulations and this is also gonna help our grant move a little forward as well, just so that they know that we have that all in place. So that we can move forward with that.
Okay. So we need a motion to do that?
Yes, please.
Motion by?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Sandy, second by John? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Ask a question, sorry, I know you can't hear me, I'm going inside. So is this a new, um, system that's coming up? Are you gonna need training?
No, it's not a new system. It's basically tying MU one and M, um, M one, um, together. So it's just kind of revamping those two systems, kind of getting rid of those and making the LGS. Uh, basically it's, uh, just narrowing it down to be a little bit, um, easier for the person in charge of it, for the officer involved. But no, it's, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't involve any trouble at this time, from what I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, none. Donation five hundred dollars worth of paint to the Alex Bay Fire Department. The fire department is having, is gonna paint the, the whole, uh, inside of the fire department. And they got an estimate, estimate for five hundred dollars of paint. And I wondered if the town was interested in supplying that paint. What's that?
What are they painting again?
The whole inside of the fire department.
For five hundred bucks?
Yep.
Wow.
That's the, that's the paint.
Oh, that's it, okay.
Materials.
That, that, that's a good price.
Yep. Yep. What's everybody think? I guess the only thing I thought about that is that if we do that for them, we should do that for the other two fire departments. Which isn't a bad thing.
Did they ask us to?
Just the one.
Haven't we given them a lot of money this year already?
This what?
Didn't we give them a lot of money already this year? Cause we.
We gave them an additional.
I wanna say it was an additional thirteen thousand a year ahead of time, cause it was supposed to be a two-year thing for twenty-six thousand and now, I mean, I'm.
I think when they say paint the fire department, they're painting the vital parts of the inside, they're not painting the walls. I mean, I would assume that if you walk in there, you'll see that there are specific color schemes for hose hookup, et cetera. And, uh, I mean, for what they did last week for, uh, for the tour boat and, uh, humpless stands, they think, uh, five hundred dollars is a drop in the bucket for something that, uh, it certainly isn't a cosmetic thing. There's, there's a purpose and if the other fire departments want it, then, uh, so be it. You know, I mean, if they request it, but I don't foresee, you know, uh, they're a vital part of our community and, uh, you know, the ambulance services is the best and so, you know, I, I don't see five hundred dollars as being an issue, uh, because you're gonna use it for the right reasons and not just a cosmetic cleanup.
Yep. I mean, I mean, Jim had a good point as far as the, what they did last week with the tour boat situation. Ronnie may even wanna get involved, you know?
All three of them want it, we're talking about fifteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Wow.
Probably not as much in the others.
I'm just saying. I'm just saying if we treat them all the same, it's really not that much money.
So let's keep peace, give it to them.
Sandy has a point, we did give them an additional, what, eight thousand? Or, or?
I thought it was thirteen, but I couldn't be wrong.
For as I'm concerned, you could never give them enough because what they do for this community.
I agree, I mean, they're, they're a vital part, I agree, so.
Priceless, there's not even a price you can put on the service of those, that those, uh, young men that wanna give us every, any time of the day, anywhere, they're, they're always there. And this, I will say about our fire department here, very active. Probably the most active I've ever seen in, in the times that I've lived here, except for maybe the seventies and early eighties. But they do a phenomenal job. And I'm only speaking for the Bay Fire Department, cause I'm not over in the Plesses, the Redwood area, so I can't speak for that. But I know here, um, they do a damn good job and they take the deserving.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, give them five hundred dollars.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second by John, second by Mike. Any, any discussion?
I understand what.
I think I wanna.
I understand, see, you still.
I'd like to reach out to the other fire departments to see if they wanna be accused of cheating one differently than the other.
Yeah, she's right here.
This is something we, we might wanna consider putting on like a budget line item.
Yeah.
Then would you speak up, cause honestly, that's what I was sitting back here thinking is that we should.
My husband ordered the change of the Redwood, or the Plesses Fire Department. They don't even have a bathroom at their fire department.
Where's that?
Plesses, they don't even have running water, well, running water, you mean?
Well, running water.
They don't have running water, I mean.
How do you fill up your tank? We don't do that, we wouldn't do that often.
No, if you come back from a call, you can't, you go to the bathroom after you come back from a call.
We now have a shortage out there. And that's been forever? Forever, they've never had running water in that building.
They have cans and bottles, they think. They, they have a donation spot for cans and bottles for a building to, to fix the building they're in. So I have a hard time when.
I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So what do you wanna do?
That we just. That we just had, we voted on it, you know, now that we talked about it.
Yeah, like I said, I, I wanna treat the fire departments equally, myself. And when you hear stories like that about Plesses, they, whatever we can give or do for them is needed.
Well, they come to us for something.
If we have a need and come to you, then that's the treatment we're.
Okay. Okay. Yep, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. Uh, Mike, I forgot to put the highway report on there. Thank you for the reminder. What do you have?
We put pipes in on Skirby Road, uh, Crims Point Extension Road, it's really tall. The pipes are all in it, we cut the shoulders off, we reprofiled the road. Uh, the sixteenth or seventeenth are in our service set. And then after that, we service treat it because we're gonna put shoulders on it. The Snyder Road and, uh, Berry Boulevard are done. That's a single service treatment, ones. Really turned out nice. You know, it's funny, like, take a look at them. Speeds Road is done with the ones. It'll be finished with, uh, one A's. One we do, uh, the, the Crims Point Extension. Um, we did cut the shoulders on that and patched it wherever needed and, uh, reshaped it. Uh, the Newman Road, which is just on the left, going into Redwood, down the flats. We put a new pipe in that, we dished it, we cut some shoulders on it. We're gonna double service treat that at the same time we do, uh, Crims Point Extension. Uh, we've had four trucks black topping for, uh, for the county. This week, hopefully there'll be some more next week. And, uh, in between times, we're hauling sand for the winter. And, uh, we hope to get, I mean, we're all playing catch-up, everybody, United States. We'd like to have our brush cut. We've got a couple of roads that we wanna cut shoulders on, we have drainage problems with them. And, uh, we're gonna start putting trucks together. Greg's gonna start fabricating on, the new truck is here. If anybody wants to come and see it, we're gonna walk the tools in the barn. And Greg is gonna start fabricating, uh, sanding on it next week, I believe. That's all I got for you.
Ford tractor, working okay?
Seems to be working perfectly right now. Yep.
Okay.
That's the one that was out here that you were gonna go talk to?
That's the one, so, is it out here still?
I don't know, it was out here last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, it was out here yesterday too. Yeah, it's working perfect, so, they put a new computer in it and I spoke with, uh, Wendell Walden a couple of times and they're nice people out there and they're willing to do anything we need.
Okay. Mike, you brought me the, oh, I was gonna bring up that lighting program, but I'm skipping that budget work session. We gotta do, we gotta start working on this budget, Nicole. Uh, and we talked about possibly the, starting the week after Labor Day. Uh, with a budget session. Anybody have any preference, didn't we, for the week after Labor Day? Do you wanna do it Wednesday night? And I think we better do it a little bit earlier for Nicole. She probably, and we started at three o'clock? Two o'clock, you wanna do it in the afternoon? Sandy, how about yours? You can do what?
I can do two on a Wednesday.
Okay. You okay with that, John? Mike?
What's that, two?
Two.
That works for me.
Yep, two o'clock on, on, uh, on Wednesday, what's the date?
About September ninth, you're saying?
Yep. That's the ninth? Ninth? So we'll make a motion, uh, need a motion to do the budget work session on eight, nine, two thousand twenty at two o'clock here at the town office.
Nine, nine. Nine, nine.
Motion by Sandy, second by John. What's that?
Nine, nine.
Yeah, nine, nine, yow.
Is it decided, Sam?
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. LED lighting program, Mike, that you brought me that paperwork on?
I did.
From, uh, Rob, I think you were involved in this?
Yeah.
Uh, initial investments, four thousand one hundred dollars, what, any idea on the rebate?
I don't know the particular numbers, Hilton, I think, I don't care.
I think he said that when you're all said and done, it'll be about two thousand dollar help payout from the town. And I think he said a year, year and a half?
Yeah, typically, so these, it's an LED lighting retrofit program that National Grid is pushing. And, uh, actually NYSERD is pushing it through National Grid. Change out all your old fluorescents to LEDs and they'll give you a rebate. And the payback is generally, they pay for themselves a little over a year usually. So it's a lot of highway grides and arenas, if they haven't done it already. So, it's a lot of highway grudges and arenas, if they haven't done it already.
We did the same thing in the school.
Same thing?
Yeah, so it's kind of a no-brainer from that standpoint.
Cheaper and better life, right?
Cheaper and better, and they last long, there's, there's forty thousand hour bulbs or something crazy.
We did it last year with the lighting.
What's in the ring?
I'm not sure if the rink scene, aren't they?
T-fives, T-fives.
So, they ought to be changed to any T-fives, T-fives are the most recent fluorescents, but even T-fives, the LEDs. Yeah, you get rid of them.
Worth the investment, because your, your payback is immediately, so.
Yeah, and, and what also happens with fluorescents, uh, they lose their intensity over time. I mean, even T-fives, they get dimmer and dimmer and dimmer as their hours go on.
That was so bad.
The LEDs just go out when the money goes.
So, I need a, a motion for us to, uh, to do this, uh, program for the town bar. Motion by Sandy, second by John, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. One other thing I have on here is that we had discussed, uh, that a couple of board members set up a meeting with, uh, Amy Cermento, that she's, says that she's not able to get ahold of us or that we don't, uh, haven't returned her calls. So, if you guys will give me permission, I will try to reach out to her and see if we can set up a meeting and, and answer her questions and anything that she has.
I've never met her, I wouldn't mind, sure.
Everybody, does that sound okay?
I think that's a good thing.
Rather than us to go through that letter and tell, say this and say that, I think it makes a lot more sense for us to sit down.
Bring in your concerns.
And, uh, we can have, have Nicole there because she's got the numbers and answer questions. So, that should be, be two of us, whoever else wants to volunteer. And I'll, I'll see if I can get a date and a time. Okay? That's all I have, has anybody got anything else? Okay, I guess we need a motion to adjourn. No executive session, right, Mike?
I just want to say, I love seeing you guys here. Thank you, it seems great, it really feels like a-
And Mike, Mike, I want to say to you that I haven't put all the reports for the water, the sewer, the zoning, everybody, always, in the old times, when everybody was coming to meetings, we had reports from everybody. I was worried about this room getting over twenty people in it, and we're regulated to twenty people, or twenty-one people. So, I'm sorry, I didn't-
No problem.
I didn't put your report on there, but thanks for reminding me. Okay, motion to adjourn. Sandy? Second by John, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Hey, that was your turn? Okay. Shelley? Shelley?